Who will help us translate for our families who speak Spanish and Mandarin so they can also follow along with our presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Eva right now for a few little instructions and then we will get started.
Good evening, families. On the bottom of your screen, you should see a globe icon. If you would click on that icon, if you select English for English only, you can go ahead and select that now. If you need interpretation or translation in Mandarin, Chinese, or Spanish, you can go ahead and click Mandarin and Chinese to select those options. Please do so now.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. Thank you to all of our families who submitted questions for tonight's town hall. We received quite a number and we took those questions and categorized them into a series of topics. Ms. Shin, if we could move to the next slide? Thank you. The questions fell into the following topic areas. Virtual Academy daily schedule, embedded time, counseling, curriculum and instruction in a virtual setting, going to class, attendance and tech, activities and athletics, safety and communication. What we'll do tonight is all the questions that fell under these topics will be have been compressed because we had like multiple daily schedules. We put it all into one question or two on that on the schedule. But every question that was asked will be covered in our presentation tonight. It just you may just not going to see all 70 of them go through. Otherwise, we'd be here all evening. So we will address all these questions. Each of us will take a category, a part of a category. We will read the question and then we may respond in one response that addresses all the questions that were listed. That'll make a little bit more sense as you see us go through. We are hoping to keep the meeting to about an hour, but given the number of questions, we might go over just a little bit. And so I ask for patience with that, but we do want to make sure that we address every question that has been asked of us. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shin to talk about the Virtual Academy daily schedule.
Okay, so with regard to the Virtual Academy daily schedule, there were three questions. The first was what time does school start and end? Will students be logged in from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.? And will students get breaks during class and between classes? So if you look at the Virtual Academy schedule here on this slide, you'll see that it's a block model. On Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, students will be going to their zero period and then their academic courses. At the start of the day, if your student has zero period, they will have a 45-minute zero period with a 15-minute transition before first period. Your first, third and fifth periods are 90 minutes long. And yes, they will be logging into Zoom on their own. And there will be 30 minutes of live instruction and then they will stay on with their teacher for the rest of that 90-minute period. You'll see after period one, there's a 20-minute transition before period three and then a 45-minute lunch before period five. At the end of each academic school day, the students have 55 minutes of independent work time. They can work on their own or they can actually access their teachers through the teacher's office hours. And more information about the teacher's office hours will be shared via email or in class once we start on Monday. You'll see throughout the course of the week that Monday and Thursday are paired with periods one, three and five and that Tuesday and Fridays are paired with periods two, four and six. Wednesday is our embedded time and I will explain that in a slide further back. And then students in the afternoon from 12:00 to 2:00 are supposed to work in independent work. And that is on their own. They're supposed to treat that as a regular school day and they can work on their homework or work on projects as needed. The second section is dedicated to embedded time. There were several questions and here are three. Number one is what is embedded time? What happens during embedded time? And can students move to different classes during embedded time? So embedded time in the virtual environment is a little bit different than what you might have experienced in person last year if your student was at GHS. Embedded time is 120-minute block occurring every Wednesday. The first section of that time from 9:00 to 9:30 will be dedicated to social emotional wellness. Teachers will check in with students and engage them in activities that promote social, emotional and mental health with some guidance from our wellness coordinator, Mr. Saporito. The next part of that time will be dedicated to academic intervention. The schedule will rotate between periods one, three and five on one Wednesday and periods two, four and six on the next Wednesday. And teachers will work with struggling students to provide additional academic support. Students will not necessarily choose which class to move to, but teachers will invite them if they're struggling in the class. If students want to ask general questions to their teachers, they also have the option to seek out those teachers during office hours at the end of every school day. We're not going to be moving on to counseling and we're going to go back to Mrs. Heinrich.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. So quite a few questions came up regarding schedule changes. If my child's schedule is incorrect, how do we change it? And what should my child do if he signed up for a zero period, but it didn't show up on his schedule? All the information regarding schedule changes is located on the Gaberlino website. Students may request a schedule change through Friday, August 21st. But in order to request a schedule change, there's four criteria that need to be met. If a student is missing a class and there's a hole in their schedule. If missing a class that fulfills a graduation requirement is missing from the schedule. A student who wants to change an elective course. A student who had a D or an F last year and has been assigned to the same teacher. If a student's request meets any of those four criteria, then they are able to make a schedule change. To do so, they would need to put in their request on the Google form that is located on the website and also was sent out to students through Naviance. Transcripts. Will the school accept unofficial transcripts for summer school courses? When school office is closed, what is the process for submission of unofficial transcripts? Yes, the school will accept unofficial transcripts for summer school. Students can send a photo of their unofficial transcript. They can scan a document. They can do a screenshot and send that into to their counselors via email. We will compare those compare all the information we receive in the unofficial transcripts. We will compare those to the official transcripts once we receive them. So for now, to make sure that we can get going with our classes and our schedules, please make sure that students send that send that information to their counselors via email. Ms. Shin, before we move forward, I'm noticing that there are a number of things coming up in the chat room. I just want to point out to everybody tonight that we will not be addressing questions in the chat room tonight. Actually, the future was supposed to be disabled. But we will do is ask the head of IT, Mr. Chow, to capture those for us and we will put up a FAQ on the website addressing those questions. I just want to make sure that we can get through the presentation tonight and not hold you too long beyond a one to two-hour time. Next slide, please. Counselor realignment. This year, due to budget cuts and the movement of one of our counselors to the wellness center coordinator position, we needed to change our number of academic counselors from five to four. And as a result of that, we needed to realign the alphabet among those four counselors. Based on information from the counselors, we created alpha case loads that were equal as close to equal as possible among the counselors. What happened with that is that some students had been with their counselor for three years, especially our seniors, were moved around. So some questions came up about, well, I got moved and how can I go back to my counselor? If I have a special relationship, can I go back to my counselor? Especially if I'm a senior and I'm getting ready to apply for college. So the answer at this point is that yes, we are going to take that into consideration. Right now, our counselors are inundated with schedule requests and transcript checking. So on August 28th, they will come together and they're going to look at the seniors and make some changes at that time. So we'll still emphasize balance, but as much as we can, we'll move students who do have that special relationship with the counselor and the counselors will be able to speak to that. We also have some questions regarding AP and honors placement. What are the requirements for enrolling in an AP or honors class? If a student meets the requirements, can they request a schedule change? Can students still join CSF and NHS? And will awards from last year be distributed to students this year? The requirements for enrolling in an AP or honors course are set by the departments. And each course has prerequisites that students must fulfill. Typically, enrollment in AP and honors class takes place in the spring when students request the courses that they would like to enroll in. At that time, the names of the students are given to the teacher who teaches the AP course. And based on the prerequisites, the students are admitted into the course. Oftentimes, we have too many students for particular courses and so waiting lists are created. And again, that's based on the criteria that is established by the departments and their prerequisites, excuse me, for the courses. Typically, students do not change schedules to go into AP. But if there's room in a course, we will consider that. The student will need to contact the AP teacher and talk to the AP teacher to see what is required of them to enter the course at this late date. Please keep in mind that if there is a waiting list for the course, the student will be put at the end of the waitlist because students are on the waitlist ahead of them will have priority before for their schedule change first. Can students still join CSF and NHS? CSF is the California Scholarship Federation and NHS is the National Honor Society. And yes, even though we're in a virtual environment, students will be given the opportunity to join these two honor associations. We will put out information via the weekly bulletin, post on the website, use our social media outlets to get the information out to students when the time is appropriate. We won't be doing that in the first few weeks of school, but typically, once we get into September, excuse me, September and October, we will be addressing membership for students. And so it's really important that they keep an eye on all the different communication channels for that information. Will awards from last year be distributed to students this year? The awards that we gave out last year were primarily for seniors and those have been distributed. Some awards that still may not or still maybe out there may not have been distributed might be athletic awards. And if we do have any of those, yes, we will find a way to get those to our students. Due to the closure of school last year, we did not hold a Renaissance Assembly, which is typically when we honor our knowledge and honor our honor roll students and our other students of the year. Because we did not have that assembly last year, we do not have those awards to distribute this year. Our hope is if everything goes well with the pandemic, that we will be able to hold that assembly again later this year. But again, it will all depend on what happens with COVID-19. Next slide, please. The long-term effects of virtual academic or virtual academy learning. What impact will virtual learning have on student achievement and on future course placement? How will colleges and universities view my child's transcript? Do they consider virtual courses equal to face-to-face courses when considering admission? So we do know that virtual learning will have an impact on student learning. By the virtue of not having live-to-live teaching in every single class, the way that we're used to it, we know that gaps can occur. So the role of the district, and we're working very hard on this, is addressing what those gaps are and how we can close those gaps. Right now, the learning continuity and attendance plan that the district is working on will address those issues and the steps that we're going to take as a learning community to bring our students back up to the level that they were before all the closures occurred. So we have a lot of work ahead of us to do that. That is certainly on our radar and we know that we need to accomplish that. In terms of course placement, future course placement and high school courses here at the high school? No, virtual learning will not impact a student or keep them out of those courses. As long as a student is completing the work, attending class, fulfilling other requirements and expectations of a class, have the appropriate grades, meet the prerequisites, students will be able to enroll in the courses that they would like to enroll in while they are here at Gaberlino High School. In terms of colleges and universities and whether or not admissions will be affected by the virtual academies that schools all over the country are participating in, the answer is no. Colleges and universities are very much aware of what public schools and private high schools are facing. And they don't want to do anything that could hinder a student's opportunity to enroll at their university. A lot of universities are accepting credit for the work that was done last spring. Universities are also looking at the courses that we are offering. And as long as we maintain the qualities and the criteria that are outlined in A through G courses, our students will be fine. As I mentioned in the first part of my response is it's very important that students make sure they're taking the correct courses, that they are applying themselves in those courses, they're meeting the expectations of those courses. As long as they do all of that, they should be fine in terms of applying to the college or universities of their choice. I do highly recommend, however, that families look into the colleges, universities that their child is interested in just to make sure that there is not a different policy that maybe we are not aware of. We are very familiar with the policies of the UC and CSU system and quite a few private colleges as well. But it's always a good idea to take a look at what's on those university and college websites because things are changing very, very quickly. So it's always a good idea to see just what is happening out there. And with that, with a curriculum instruction, I am going to turn this back over to Ms. Shin.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinrich. In curriculum and instruction, there were several questions. The first question was how has the faculty been prepared to deliver effective and equitable instruction? Have teachers been trained to provide virtual instruction in a 90-minute block? And what is the curriculum for the virtual, the online virtual academy courses? We understand that equity will need to frame instruction, especially as we enter into this season of virtual learning. The district has provided professional development for teachers during these last two weeks and we asked our teachers to examine and focus on key concepts, skills, content and standards as they design lessons within the parameters of virtual learning and the virtual academy schedule. We know that adjustments will need to be made to teach on a block schedule and we're planning to provide opportunities for training and collaboration to ensure that teachers are effectively engaging their students within the content. The textbooks and teaching materials will remain the same as in-person learning and the curriculum will be adapted to the virtual setting. The next question is are teachers providing time within the first two weeks of school for students to learn how to log into new programs and adjust to the new system of learning? The teachers have been asked to utilize the first two weeks of school to guide their students through the basics of the programs they will be using, including how to log on and how to engage in lessons and learning online. They've also been encouraged to clarify their expectations for behavior, participation and communication as they head into the virtual academy. The next question is how would the GHS administration ensure that teachers are interacting with students via Zoom in each class period? All teachers will be asked to add administrators to their Google classrooms and submit their Zoom links as a measure of accountability. Once this school year is underway, the administration team will create a schedule to visit all virtual classrooms. The next question is what are the expectations for students for independent work between 2:05 and 3:00 p.m.? There are two places in the schedule dedicated for independent work. 55 minutes are provided at the end of each day on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday and two hours are provided after the academic intervention time on Wednesdays from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. Students have the opportunity to work on assignments and projects and to study during this time. This will be independent of the Zoom classroom, so students will need to develop a schedule to use this time thoughtfully. Do students log themselves into and out of classes? Do they need to be visible while in the Zoom setting? Yes, students will need to log in and out of Zoom classes. We will be asking them to be visible during the session and to treat each 90-minute block period as if they were in a physical classroom. The last question, it pertains to special education, excuse me. And so I'm going to go ahead and transition this to Mr. Janisowski.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. How will the needs of special education students be met? Teachers will review the accommodations and modifications for their students with IEPs. If additional support is needed, teachers will utilize the intervention time on Wednesdays to meet with students to provide additional support. Students have been assigned to their case carriers for the first 30 minutes of embedded time. Case carriers will then have that time to work on specific areas of need that the students are struggling in. Under student attendance. If a student cannot log into a class, will they receive an unexcused absence? And do I need to report my child's absence from class or from the school day and the reason? Yes, if your child needs to be absent from school, please report their absence by contacting the attendance office as soon as possible. The district is currently working on protocols that align to state guidelines and ed code for attendance during the online virtual academy. More information will be provided through the school's website and the district website as well as social media channels. Grading. Under grading. If a student falls behind in their work, will that be reflected in their grade? It's important to know that distance learning and learning from the spring will be different from the virtual academy in this new school year. Students will be responsible for the work that is assigned to them. If they do not engage in virtual learning and submit assignments, it will be reflected in their grades. If a student is struggling, how will they receive support to ensure that their grade will not go down? The academic intervention provided on Wednesdays during the second part of embedded time is specifically dedicated to provide support for students who are struggling. With that said, students will also need to learn how to advocate for themselves by seeking their teachers out during office hours or through email correspondence or to make sure that they are getting the help that they need in a timely manner. I will now turn it over to Vince Lopez, Assistant Principal.
We're having some technical issues, so we're sharing a seat. And since I'm the assistant principal here at Gaberlino High School and I'll be speaking on technology. The questions that are asked, will hotspots be available for my child in using their own laptop? Should families, what should families do if their child needs a laptop or a hotspot? Chromebooks and hotspots are being issued during the materials distribution scheduled by grade level this week. If students miss those assigned days, a makeup day is scheduled for Wednesday, August 19th. Students will be allowed to check out laptops and hotspots or a hotspot only. More information will be provided on our website and on Instagram as we complete textbook distribution for seniors tomorrow. How will teachers deal with situations where students lose connectivity or cannot log in? If students lose connectivity or cannot log on, their first step should be to contact their teacher and inform them of the issue. They should continue to try to get back onto the platform and relay the status to their teacher so that they can inform them of the situation. These issues will need to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis as each situation will be unique. If a negative pattern is established, a teacher, counselor or school administrator will work together to investigate the source of the problem and find a solution. Athletics and extracurriculars. How will PE classes and athletic conditioning work in a virtual environment? If a student is part of a club team, can they count that for their PE class? PE teachers will Zoom with their classes through live instruction. These students are expected to attend and will receive a grade. The individual teacher will determine how they assign grades. The grading will be aligned to the PE department's grading policies. Sport club programs do not teach the eight components of the PE curriculum required by the state for graduation. These programs cannot be substituted for a PE class. Will Gaberlino hold athletic events this school year? The CIF has compressed three athletic seasons into two seasons. The first season will begin in late December. However, public health guidelines will ultimately determine when athletics will begin. SGUSD will follow those guidelines. And at this time, St. Gabriel Unified has not allowed any in-person conditioning or off-site programs. The athletic directors will work with the administration coaches on preparation for the return of the sports program. Are clubs allowed during virtual learning? Yes, ASB will be creating guidelines for clubs to operate virtually. These will be shared with club advisors and presidents within the first few weeks of school. Safety and communication. When students return to school under the hybrid model, what steps will be taken to prevent ill students from entering the school? Parents will be asked to conduct a symptom check before sending their child to school. When a student arrives at school, an additional symptom check will take place. If a student has a high temperature or is exhibiting symptoms that will, then they will be sent to a separate location on campus and parents will be notified to pick up the student. When the hybrid model goes into effect, can a student opt to remain in the virtual academy? If a student chooses to remain in the virtual academy, will they be assigned a new teacher for their courses or will they Zoom into courses? Yes, a student can opt to remain fully online in the virtual academy. The district is currently working on this issue. Staff is working on a method that will allow the students to log in to the live lesson. However, it remains an additional technology that we're exploring. The district is exploring those options along with many other districts and that could delay the process. So we do not know how long it will take to acquire. The other option being discussed is to develop the schedule to include a period of virtual instruction. The parent survey indicates that over 50% of our parents are opting to have their child remain in virtual academy. So it is an issue that the district is very much aware. It is important to note that if the school opens and we need to close due to a COVID outbreak or surge, the district is more prepared to transition to virtual learning. We've learned a great deal last spring and in preparation this summer to help make that transition smoother. In what ways and how often will administration communicate with parents? Will a call go out to parents informing them of when and how going back to school will work? The administration continues to post information on the website, on Instagram, Twitter and Facebook. Information will go out through robocalls, email systems. The message will be sent to students through Naviance. Information will be posted as it becomes available and as situation changes. If parents have questions, please email any of the administration, any administrator. But we ask for patience in regarding the turnaround time. Due to the high influx of emails, we will do our best to respond within 48 hours. A reminder call that school starts on Monday will be sent on Friday. Instructions on what to do and what to expect on the first day of school will be posted on the GHS website and will be sent to students through Naviance. Now I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Ms. Shannon Heinrich.
All right, that went a lot faster than I thought it would. I'm looking at the time and I'm quite surprised, actually. Given that, I do want to stick to the seven o'clock end time, but because we have extra time, I am going to look at some of the questions in the chat room. And so assistant principals, I may throw some towards your way depending on what the topic is. So let's give me a moment, we're going to go back in. One of the first couple of questions that came up in the chat room was addressing Zoom fatigue. And that if kids are expected to be on, you know, live online with teachers for four and a half hours, what are we going to do about Zoom fatigue? Ms. Shin, do you want to take that one?
Sure. I think we are aware and, you know, we'll continue to talk to the staff about Zoom fatigue. Obviously, you know, 90 minutes of instruction is difficult in a classroom and an in-person setting. But 90 minutes in a class, three classes a day and then sitting in front of a computer is very, very difficult. And I think it's going to be difficult for our teachers as well. So I think we do need to incorporate breaks in between, so we need to be thoughtful about what our students need. So I think what we'll do is make sure that our teachers are communicating that and making sure to open the lines of communications for their students. So students should be able to speak to their teacher, asking them for a break if should they need one. They could also voice to the teacher that they themselves might need to go to another room and take a break and so they can kind of do a video off as long as they have that permission from the teacher. And, you know, I think it is a work in progress. We've never gone to a full virtual academy before. And so I think we will begin this way and then we will go and we will make sure to get feedback from parents and get feedback from students and then we'll adjust accordingly. But at this point, I think what's important is we want to get back to as close as normal as possible in terms of making sure that students are engaged, that we're connecting with our students and making sure that we have high-quality instruction and we put that in front of students every day.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. We also have a question about Mandarin one, that we had some freshman students who had requested Mandarin one, but were not able to enroll, but other freshman students were. And so what was the criteria that was used to determine that placement? Unfortunately, we only have one Mandarin teacher and she's actually teaching a full load of six classes. And so and they're all full. And so Mandarin one is definitely full. And so what we had to do is we had to look at the freshmen's schedules and students who didn't, who wouldn't have schedules completely blown up as a movement. who wouldn't have schedules completely blown up as a movement to Mandarin One, were offered the option of moving to Spanish. So a lot of it came down to conflicts with other courses and how easily it was to move around those schedules. Other factors may have been in play, and so I would strongly suggest that you talk to your student's counselor, and the counselor will be able to fill you in on why your particular student may not have been selected for the Mandarin One course. There's another question we have about being visible. And if being visible, we said that students need to be seen, does that mean that the camera should have, or the PC should have a camera? It is a good idea to have a camera. If you're, all of the devices that have been distributed by the district do have cameras. We do know that some students may not be comfortable being visible on camera. Families may not want their child to be visible. The reason that we're requesting the visibility, and as I said, I'm going to use the word request, although we're kind of saying we'd like them to be visible. We'll kind of cross that bridge as we continue to see how things play out as we move forward. But one of the problems we ran into in the spring is when students were not visible, teachers cannot tell if the student is still participating in the class. So visibility, just as if we were in a physical setting and a teacher come look around the classroom and notice who's involved and who's engaged and who's not engaged. Having visibility on the screen allows them to also determine that when they're working in a virtual setting. So that's the reason why we would like our students to be visible when they're working live with the teacher during that 30-minute timeframe. It was mentioned yesterday, at a meeting yesterday, I'm not sure which one it was, but about Google Meet and that the use of Google Meet instead of using Zoom. And could we clarify that since Zoom seems to be a security issue? Eva, Ms. Shin, I'm going to throw that one back to you.
Sure. So I know that there have been some articles that have gone out since the popularity of Zoom has increased within the last few months. I think the district has looked into that, and actually, we have licensing with Zoom, and so it increases the functionality and capacity that teachers can use. So at this point, we are starting with Zoom. It's not to say that teachers may not use Google Meet. It depends on the content area and what will be, what the instruction will look like in that class. I know that teachers are also using a program that we have licensing for called Skies Learn. So it's going to be essential for students and teachers to communicate back and forth in terms of what they are using, how they're using it, what students are expected to do in terms of logging in and engaging every day. And again, that was communicated to teachers to make sure to allot for, in the first two weeks of instruction, to make sure that students are comfortable and they know what to do, and they can walk through the steps on their own.
Okay, and Ms. Shin, since we're on technology, if a incoming freshman checked out a Chromebook at Jefferson, is there a need to return that and check out a book, check out a Chromebook through Gaberlino?
So what I would do is I would actually bring that to our next Wednesday's makeup day, and then we can actually talk to the site IT Tech to make sure that we are aware of which device that you have, just as a check-in. But at this point, I think students were encouraged, SGUSD students, if they were continuing on within the district, they were encouraged to keep their devices. So it should be okay. But again, you can come in, bring it with you, and then we can just make sure that in terms of scanning it and us knowing that it's a student now at Gaberlino, we can confirm that when you come in on Wednesday. You could also shoot me an email, and then I can make sure to take care of that with you, and then I can correspond with you about the answers there.
And I'm going to give you one more, and then I'll pick on somebody else. How will students know how to Zoom in on Monday?
Okay, so that's a great question. So teachers are going to be actually encouraged to email their students, welcoming them to their virtual classroom, and then they can put the information there. The students are also going to be added to the Google Classroom and the Google Classroom stream. The information should also be there. And then as a last measure, you can also look on Aries. We're also going to encourage and train our teachers to make sure that that information is in Aries. When a student pulls up their schedule, they should be able to see a column that says, I believe, website. And so that will be the Google Classroom, and then they should see a column that says meeting. And then we're encouraging our teachers to put in the Zoom link into that area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shin. Mr. Jazowski, we have a question about 504 plans. Will they be treated the same as IEPs? Did we lose him? I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez can't hear you.
He's trying to log on, he won't have a visual, but he may be able to get this.
Okay.
Hello, yes. Yes, 504s will be handled similarly to IEPs. However, right now, we're currently working with Student Support Services at our district to really iron out how that is going to look. So, you know, certainly IEPs will be held virtually. And I would have to imagine, and I know we're moving in that direction, that 504s will be held the exact same way with the counselors.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, we have some questions regarding textbooks and yearbooks. So if a senior did not, or a student or a senior did not pick up a yearbook from last year, can they do so? And how are students getting their textbooks?
So textbooks will be, if the seniors will come tomorrow and they can pick up their textbooks, then next Wednesday, we'll have a makeup where if they need to exchange textbooks, they've changed their class, they can make that switch, or they can come back and they can pick up the books that they need because they missed the original date. Hotspots and Chromebooks will also be available at that time. We also have a list of the students who did not receive their yearbooks at the end of the year, and we're distributing those as well, so they can come to that distribution. If they don't need to come into the campus to get the textbooks, it'll be at the front table before they enter the school, and then we'll hand those out.
Okay, and Ms. Shin, would you mention the makeup days for textbooks?
Sure, the makeup, the first makeup day is going to be next Wednesday, August 19th, from 12:30 to 3:00. We are going to be sending out information about how each grade level is going to be broken out during that time to make sure that we are trying to practice social distancing and making sure to allot enough time for each grade level. There are other makeup days that are in place, but we're going to start with that Wednesday. And then once the, once that is, once we've completed that day, then we're going to figure out the other two days based on how many other students need to come.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, I'm going to go back to you. Are students going to be required to wear the standard Gaberlino PE uniform for virtual PE?
No, they just need to be dressed in appropriate clothing for activity. So they don't have to have the Gaberlino short or top. It doesn't even have to be a Gaberlino shirt. It just has to be something that they can move in, and that is an athletic piece of clothing.
Well, as long as we're talking about clothing, is there a dress code during Virtual Academy?
Well, we expect students to abide by the same standards as we would expect on the campus because there will be a visible component to instruction. Yeah, we would ask the students abide by the dress code that we've had in place and that students are dressed and prepared for instruction of that day. So, yeah, they shouldn't be in their pajamas, and they should be dressed as if they went to school.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shin, we have a request. A couple of families are struggling with the embedded time schedule. And I know that we as a staff were kind of confused by that at times, too. Would you mind going over that one more time?
No problem, happy to. Let me just go back to that slide. Okay. So if you look at the chart here, embedded time is a 120-minute block. There's two areas of focus, and the way that we design that is based on state requirements. The state is asking us to report back on how we're offering social emotional wellness and support for our students. And then we're also being asked to offer tier-two academic supports and intervention. And tier-two meaning that it's with struggling students, so students who are struggling with grades, students who have IEPs, students who have special accommodations, EL students, et cetera. So the first focus area is 9 to 9:30. So all students are being assigned an embedded time. So during that time, students will be checking into their embedded time class, and they will be asked for the full 30 minutes to stay within that class. Now, the activities within that class will vary. It will be a little bit of social emotional learning. It will be a wellness check-in just to make sure in terms of mental and other health that students are doing okay. And then there will be some activities that are designed that will be passed through schoolwide. And it's just to make sure that our students are doing okay. Obviously, with virtual learning, the connectedness is missing, and we want to make sure that that's going to be part of our instruction. The second part of embedded time is the intervention piece, and it's academic intervention. And this is going to be offered specifically to struggling students first. So teachers are going to be inviting those students during class. So they might see, your student might be in a class during first period. They might be struggling with their English class, and the teacher is going to say, "Okay, I'm going to invite you to join me in intervention time so I can work with you on this skill or this particular assignment." And then the student will join that intervention time. In terms of all other students, let's say that you are not struggling with that class, but you do have questions, you can email that teacher or contact them through Google Classroom and let them know, "Hey, Mr. Lopez, I'm really struggling with this current assignment. Could I actually go into embedded time with you during intervention and then ask you some questions?" And then you can work out with the teacher when you can join or if you can join. And that time is really just allotted to make sure that there is additional access to teachers and that teachers are really being thoughtful about how to reach out to our students who will be struggling.
Okay, Ms. Shin, there is another, I have another question regarding embedded time. Is, are the teachers, all of our teachers are involved in embedded time, all of them will have an embedded time section. Have they been trained on social and emotional well-being? Are they psychs or counselors?
No, and that's, you know, those are the same questions that we're getting from our teachers. But what I would say is that how, the question is how do we address those needs schoolwide? And I think the only way to do that is to do it schoolwide. So it's not to say that they're going to be doing some MFT counseling. It's going to be activities just to check in on everyone, activities or curriculum that will be shared by our wellness coordinator, Mr. Saporito, or our social worker, Denise Ledesma. And they will provide some questions or some engaging discussions just to think through maybe relationship building, connectedness or disconnectedness, especially in this season where that's such a great need.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, if for PE, should students go outside to do the activities during Virtual Academy?
Well, they're going to need to be in a space where they can move and have enough space to move in different directions. Outside and, or inside, it's going to be dependent on what's available. So the PE teachers will get a feel for what type of space most of the students will have. But they are going to need to be able to move in different directions. So outside would be ideal, and that would be preferred, but that will need to be worked out if that's not available.
Okay, thank you. There's also a question about ID photos. I'll go ahead and take that one. We had originally scheduled to have ID photos taken during our textbook distribution, which is occurring all of this week. Based on parent concerns and also just given the situation with the virus right now, the current situation with the virus, we felt it was the best interest, the health interest of everybody, to cancel the taking of ID photos. And that does create a little bit of concernation for our students because the ID photos, other than for seniors, serve as the photos in the yearbook. We are still going to have a yearbook. There was, I saw some students who were concerned in the chat box. We are still having a yearbook this year, but how we take photos is going to be a little bit different. We're looking at some different options. The yearbook staff is looking at the possibility, maybe selfies, substituting for photos this year. We hope to still take ID photos at a later time. We know that we have until after the first of the year to meet yearbook deadlines with what we call the mugshot pages. However, it will depend on the virus. So depending on health guidelines and how flu season progresses will really determine when we do that. And that leads into another question, which was realistically, what is the soonest timeframe that you see students returning to in-person learning? I really wish I had an answer for that. There's nothing more that I want than having our 1,600-plus students back on our campus, in our classrooms, and doing the activities that they're missing. However, when that happens is really going to be dictated by what happens with the virus. If the numbers continue to go down and we reach the level that takes the county off of the monitoring system, at that point, or the monitoring list, at that point, we'll then be able to, the district will be able to consider moving to the hybrid model. But there's a lot of pieces that go into that. There's public health guidelines that have to be considered, that 14-day being off the monitoring list. So the case positivity rate, there's just a number of items or elements, factors that have to be taken into place before we can go that route. So I really don't want to say, you know, if I were an MD, I'd say, well, maybe not till January. But I'd like to be an optimist and hopefully, say hopefully before that. But really, it's going to depend on the virus and how the virus tracks in the county before we'll know when we can come back. Right.
Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes, Nick, go ahead.
I just wanted to jump in so it wasn't missed. I know I saw a question about testing or state testing, PSAT, SAT, and our CASP or SBACK. Yes, those tests will be occurring, but please be, you know, know that the school site will be reaching out to you, to the students and to the parents to let you guys know when exactly those dates will be. And of course, the procedures and protocols that we will be following with guidelines from our district and from the College Board and how those tests will be offered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jazowski. Couple of questions, I'm going to go back to some photo questions and yearbook questions. One is cap and gown photos. We're not able to do cap and gown photos. Typically, when that's taken, there is gowns that are shared by photographer that is shared from student to student. Given the virus, we're certainly not having any equipment or any material shared from person to person. So the gowns, we knew that that was not going to happen this year by virtue of the virus. Also, there's a question about whether a refund could be had if the quality of the yearbook is not, is not up to what previous years have been. No, we will not be giving refunds, but I will also say that I'm very, very confident that the yearbook will be of equal quality. Our yearbook staff and our yearbook advisor are very, very good. Our yearbook advisor has won multiple awards for the yearbooks that he is overseeing. So I'm not worried about the quality. It might look a little different because we're going to have to rely possibly on photos being submitted from our students. So from that, it'll look a little different, but please, I'm going to ask your trust and our advisor that he's not going to put photos into the yearbook that are blurry or can't be seen or the subject's too far away. Any selfies are submitted, he will release guidelines, the staff will release guidelines ahead of time as to what students need to do for submission of pictures, what the picture should look like. All those types of guidelines will be given so that students know what to submit and what to expect. I'm going to look, take a quick look. Unexcused absences. Mr. Jaskowski, there's a question about if a student can't log in. Could you explain the unexcused absence piece again?
Yeah, with, or in regard to students not being able to log in, a teacher might not know immediately the reason why a student is not logged in. And at some point, they probably will mark the student absent, right? There's going to be different circumstances for, you know, multiple students who may not be able to log on for particular reasons. For the most part, what we want to say right now is we're going to look at it kind of in a case-by-case scenario. Certainly, we're understanding when it comes to connectivity issues, Wi-Fi going out in a home, stuff like that. But certainly, we will investigate the situation and we will rectify it as soon as we determine, you know, the facts of the incident or the details behind the absence. But just know that we will take the time to look into those circumstances.
Thank you. Ms. Shin, could you speak a little bit to the makeup days? We're getting quite a few questions in the chat box about the makeup days for textbook and technology distribution.
Sure. So I think I answered it in the chat box in terms of the question about freshman students. So freshman students were supposed to come on Monday, but if they miss that day, they can come next Wednesday, August 19th, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. In terms of the grade breakdown, in terms of time, we will be sending out that information via email, and it will be posted on our website at the end of this week. We are still doing one more day of textbook pickup, so that's tomorrow for seniors. And we just have to assess how many students we're talking about, just to make sure that we're dividing that time up wisely.
Regarding the day tomorrow, if a student can't come at their assigned time, when is the best time for them to come? Can they come earlier?
So the earliest time is 12:00 p.m. So I would say that, you know, we obviously want to accommodate and make sure that students get their books. So I would say that, you know, we obviously want to accommodate and make sure that students get their books, but, you know, we have to make sure to fit it within that time window and we are trying to be thoughtful about distancing and making sure that, you know, we have a certain number of students on campus and not to exceed that number. So that's kind of why the time was broken out by alpha. But if the student can't make it, they can come early, but I would suggest to come at the very top of the day or at the very bottom of the day. So tomorrow goes from twelve to four, so come right at twelve or come closer to maybe three-thirty or so just to make sure that they're included, but that, you know, in terms of making sure that we're keeping to that schedule that we're able to do that.
And if they don't have technology and they need to start class on Monday, what's the best thing to do?
So I would, if they're not able to come this week and they have to come next Wednesday, I think, you know, we need to be flexible during this time so that we're adjusting into the virtual academy. I know there are a variety of needs and a variety of issues. I know, I think there was a parent who posted that it's extremely difficult to have everybody on the Wi-Fi and it causes a strain and a slowdown. And I think, yeah, all of us are experiencing those kinds of challenges at home. So I think they can come to that makeup day. We can, if you send an email to your teacher or you post on Google Classroom or contact your teacher through Google Classroom, just let them know. I have yet to pick up a Chromebook. I'm doing so on Wednesday. I'll make sure to do so. Please make sure that you know that I mean to be in the class, but I just am not able to do so by Monday.
Thank you. Mr. Janszowski, who should a parent call if their child is sick? How do they report an absence and how do they report the reason for absence?
What you're gonna do is obviously do, parents should do what they normally have done in the past. Contact our attendance office. We will have attendance clerks working here on-site and abroad, but please do it that way.
Thank you. I do want to respond to what, a message just came up about the link that goes out when I do the phone calls and in the emails, the Gaberlino are at SUUSD.k12.ca.us. I guess I just want to say thank you for alerting us to that because that has always been our website address. I am wondering if right now, they're in the process of turning our, they're changing the format of our website or in the process of things shifting over. We've noticed a couple glitches and I'm wondering if that's it. So I will check into that, find out exactly what that is and make sure that I include the right address if indeed it has changed and we'll double-check on that. For the heads-up. And if it was a typo, I apologize to everybody. I see that too. Thank you. All right, we're kind of towards the end. I want to see if there's anything really out there that we may have missed and if we did, we'll certainly include it in our FAQs that we will post. We will also post this presentation and the answers, the responses that we gave in the prepared part of it. We won't have all the ones we just did, but what we have in the prepared portion, we'll definitely post that as well so that you can see that. The last, I will end with the last question that I saw, or the question, a series of questions, which goes back to the counseling and whether, how do students ask, or senior students request to be moved? And what is the process for that? The students have not shared that process yet, and students, excuse me, the counselors have not shared that process yet. Again, the key, key thing to remember, everybody, is that we have to keep those caseloads balanced. And so if a counselor is not willing to take on a high caseload, a change may not occur. So, so keep that in mind, but they will, we will let you know what the process is. It may be internal only, but again, we will publicize that as soon as I have that information and that'll be more along around August twenty-eighth. Also, but keep in mind, also I do want to try to alleviate some fears, is in terms of letters of recommendation, there was a question, can my student ask last year's counselor for a letter of recommendation? Absolutely. Our counselors are not, are not going to turn kids away and say, "Well, you're no longer on my caseload and I know I worked with you for three years and I really know you really well. I'm not gonna write a letter for you." They won't do that. So just please reach out to them and as I said, we'll have more information regarding the counseling alignment a little bit later, but again, we have to make sure that we keep things equal because we want to make sure that we have good service and all kids are receiving the attention that they deserve. I'm gonna take one last look and I think, I think we're there, everybody. But again, if you have questions, send them our way and we will make sure that we get those questions answered for you and posted on the website. Thank you again to everybody who submitted questions. Thank you for participating tonight. Thank you for asking some more questions in the chat room. We really appreciate that. We are looking forward to a very good, wonderful school year. Our theme this year is rising to the challenge and I think that all of us are going to be facing challenges. But the one thing I have learned in my twenty-seven years of association with Gaberlino High School, whether as a parent, a teacher, or an administrator, that this community can do anything that it sets its mind to. So I am confident that we're gonna come through this really well. Our kids are gonna come through it. And I thank you all for being our partners in this new adventure. Thank you and have a good evening.